Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome you all to the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five town meeting for the town of Dudley. We've exceeded the quorum requirement of fifty registered voters as of, I think it was like six forty-eight. The number is above fifty tonight. We will continue. My name is Chris Starcheski. I am the moderator for this evening. One community reminder before we jump into some of the more formal business. The annual election for the town of Dudley is held on Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, from eight to eight. Some very important decisions are to be made with candidates tonight, where you get a chance to meet those in contested races. We'll be on June third at six P M. in the municipal center, where you get to hear from some, if not all, of the candidates on the ballot. Thanks for taking the time to be here. Town meeting is a vital part of our local government. It is where we, as residents, come together to make important decisions that shape our community. Your participation tonight helps ensure that Dudley remains a town guided by values and voices of its citizens. Before we begin, I'd like to go over just a few brief reminders to ensure that the meeting runs smoothly. When you have an opportunity to speak this evening, please await to be recognized. Just raise your hand or just approach the outside of your aisle, and then when you're recognized, you can come down to the microphone in the center. Once you get to the microphone, please clearly state your full name and your street address here in Dudley. All discussion should be relevant and germane to the article in question. All discussion should be directed through the moderator, and as always, we've done a great job in my tenure as moderator maintaining respectful and civil tone as we consider each article on the warrant. Again, if you'd like to speak and be recognized this evening, just raise the hand or stand and head to the end of your aisle to be recognized. If you have difficulty approaching the mic, with any difficulty walking down the incline, no problem, we'll get the microphone up to you so you can participate fully. We'll proceed article by article as outlined in the town warrant. Each article will be read aloud, followed by discussion, questions, and then a vote using your clicker. We'll talk about those in just a moment. Two little bits about that are requests that I have through unanimous consent. Number one, I request that for articles with lengthy verbiage and/or long sequences of numbers and line items for budget, that we forego the reading of the full article as printed. Is there any opposition to that rule this evening? Excellent, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move forward with that. The second request that I have, which has been practiced in my tenure as moderator, I request that debate for each article be limited to five minutes per speaker rather than the ten minutes outlined in Robert's Rules of Order, and I'm requesting that through unanimous consent. Is there any opposition to that rule for this evening? Wonderful, you are all phenomenal. Occasionally, we may refer to Town Council, which is Mrs. Rindazo down here in the front row. We also may have others who have specific knowledge of issues, information, and remedies relevant to particular articles, as well as requesting members of various boards and municipal departments. Other than those who are being called upon directly to interact with us, everyone else who's able to speak this evening must be a resident of the town of Dudley. We do have several guests down in the front, as well as members of the press, and we do have a couple of students who are seated with their parents. Thank you for coming this evening. As part of their civics course in eighth grade at Dudley Middle School, we extended an invitation to students to be able to come and participate in the witness town meeting in action, so they could get an understanding of what municipal government actions look like. Again, thanks for being here tonight and for playing an active role in Dudley's future. With that, we can begin the business of the meeting. Do we want to do the clicker apart, or do we want to have Mr. Smith? Oh my goodness, did I forget? I did forget, because the flag was on the wrong side of the auditorium. I totally forgot. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you, apologies on that. It's always to my right. So with the clickers, just a pointed information about that before we move on. The very back of the auditorium, about three quarters back to the back, there will be a and maybe towards the front, but definitely at the back, there's going to be a delay in the response of your clickers tonight. We're going to go over that during our clicker quiz after the tutorial. If your clicker is not working during the quiz and it's not registering, we just ask that you stand up and come down towards the front half of the auditorium. All right, we'll talk a little bit about the delay in just a moment. So the clicker is no use to you outside of this meeting, so before you leave tonight, be sure you turn it in at the exit doors. There are really only two buttons that you need to worry about on this clicker. It's button number one A and two B. One A is voting in the affirmative, voting yes. Two B is voting in the negative, voting in no on a warrant article. When you press the button, you'll notice on the far red side of the clicker, there's a small light that will press. Pressing it now, it will be yellow, and if you notice in the screen, if you press it now, there'll be a circle with a line through, meaning that the vote is null and void, there's nothing to communicate to. If you push the wrong button when you are voting this evening, we have a twenty-second window with which to record your final vote. So if you're voting in the affirmative, but you mistakenly clicked the two B button, you have remaining time to click the one A button. It takes about four seconds to register your vote into our system. So repeatedly pressing the button if you made an incorrect response will not do anything. It may delay the system further. Just be patient, take that four seconds, and go ahead and record your vote the second go-around there. If at some point your clicker is definitely not working, you've moved down towards the front after our test question, if it hasn't worked for you properly, you can just raise your hand, call out a point of order, and we can go ahead and get your vote recorded, maybe get you a new clicker if it's needed. Okay? We'll work through it nice and free, nice and easy tonight. Again, please return these at the end of the night. That joke's getting old, we need new material about the TV remote control. So again, a one A is a yes vote, a two B is a no vote. You will get a green light and an indicator in the L C D screen. If the vote was not registered, if you can't see that on the bottom right-hand screen, there will be a null symbol, a circle with a line diagonal, to indicate that your vote was not recorded. So it's clicker tutorial time. Very complicated question, I know. Are we in the town of Dudley, Massachusetts? We'll put that to a vote. Notice that the counter down at the bottom is going. Go ahead and test out your clicker now. Click once, and it should record within a four-second delay. Okay, so those of you who said, no, it's not working, stand up, come on down, come closer. There we go. This is just like a middle school auditorium where all the eighth graders come from back to school. So that last go-around, as you can tell, we have more than seventy folks in attendance. We had about seventy votes recorded. So those who stood up and moved to the front, we're going to go ahead and reload this test question, just to double check, make sure we can get as many accurate responses as And while we're getting settled, just a reminder, the only headwear that may be worn in terms of baseball caps or uniform caps are those worn by active-duty police, fire, or military in uniform. Those are the only hats permitted in town meetings per Dudley's town bylaws. All right, we're going to go ahead and try this test question one more time. Are we in the town of Dudley, Massachusetts? We're going to put that to a vote, and we need to just reset the timer. And you can go ahead and try and cast your vote now. One for yes, we are in Dudley, two for no. Got about eight seconds left. All right, just by showing hands, issues, okay. Can you try and maybe turn that clicker back in at the back? We knew there were a hundred and sixteen counted on that last round. I don't know if we can display percentage. There we go, we solved a problem.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Olivia. Hey, Mr. Sigunov, on your way by, can you check to see if that microphone is on? It's on? Oh, great projection. All right, it appears as if everyone has received a clicker. We're going to go ahead and repull one more time. If yours does not work this time, the solution is going to be really simple. We're going to concentrate our audience in the bottom left-hand side of the auditorium as close to our receiver as possible. So if you're in the far back right and it doesn't work, we're going to move you down from it. Or you're welcome to stay, but the vote's going to be difficult to record. So the question is, are we in the town of Dudley, Massachusetts? Go ahead and put that to a vote, and you can cast your vote now. All right, Olivia, can we see the numbers on that one? One twenty-one. All right, we got a few folks moving. If you haven't been here in a while, the reason that we're going through this process is to try and avoid a mid-meeting voice vote and count paper ballot experience. Thanks for your patience. We're going to reload that one more time, and then we'll roll, promise. So the question that we're looking at today, are we in the town of Dudley, Massachusetts? One, yes; two, no. Okay, Ms. Smith, could I invite you up to go ahead and certify the notification of
As instructed in the preceding warrant, legal voters of the town of Dudley assembled in the Conning Van Coe Gallery Auditorium at the Shepherd Hill Regional High School, sixty-eight Dudley Oxon Road and said Dudley on Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The meeting was brought to order... Let me try this one more time, I grabbed a wrong paper. To either of the constables in the town of Dudley and said Dudley greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Dudley qualified to vote in elections. In town fears to meet in Conning Van Coe Gallery Auditorium at the Shepherd Hill Regional High School, sixty-eight Dudley Oxon Road and said Dudley on Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and/or Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, if needed, in any other such times as may be voted, if needed, at seven P M. then and there to take action on the following items.
Thank you.
We are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the Dudley Municipal Center and on the town of Dudley website, and by posting notice of availability of the warrant on one cable access channel. Warrant to be posted at least seven days before holding of said meeting. Hereof fail not to make due return of this warrant, with your doing thereon, to the town clerk at the time of holding of said meeting. Given under our hands is twentieth day in April in the year two thousand twenty-five. Stephen P. Sullivan, Chairman, Maquis Landry, Vice Chairman, Janet De Chesnais, Clerk, Carrie Sigunovich, Jason Johnson. To the Board of Selectment, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Dudley by posting up attested copies of the same at the Dudley Municipal Center on May sixth, two thousand twenty-five. I also observed it posted on the town's website and notice of availability on the Dudley Cable Access Channel on May sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Thereby making my return to the Dudley Town clerk on May sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Jonathan J. Ruda, Constable for the town of Dudley.
Thanks, Ms. Smith. That brings us to our business this evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to be going ahead with Article One, to see if the town will vote to receive the reports of several town officers in all committees or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayo?
Good evening. The F A A recommends that you pass Article One in I S O M. Most of them made in seconded discussion for Article One. Seeing none, we'll move Article One to a vote. All in favor, one.
Article Two. Okay, we'll move Article One to a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clear majority. Article Two, hear committee recommendations, to hear and act on the recommendations of the Board of Selectment and the Finance Appropriation and Advisory Committee, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayo? The F A A recommends you pass Article Two in I S O M. Motion's been made in seconded. Is there any discussion for Article Two? Before we move Article Two to a vote, so when you press your clicker, if you are holding it in your lap, there may be some interference with the chairs, go ahead and hold it up a little bit, point it towards Olivia over there, and we can go ahead and see if that'll help those of you who had difficulty. If it corrects itself, it corrects itself. If it doesn't, yeah, we got to. So we'll move Article Two to a vote. This is all in favor, one. We have one thumbs down, that's not too bad, but I think we're okay there. That one vote is not going to impact the clear majority. Article Two passes. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to determine the sums of money the town will raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds to defray the charges and expenses of the town, and provide for a reserve fund or funds determining in the compensation for elected offices and including debt and interest for the ensuing fiscal year beginning on July one, two thousand twenty-five, with the amount shown be appropriated from the tax levy unless otherwise specified for fiscal year twenty-six for departmental operating purposes, debt service, and other town expenses as listed in the spreadsheet chart. Mr. Mayo?
The F A A recommends that you appropriate the sum of twenty-nine million, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars to fund the town budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-five, including its assessment for the Dudley Child Rejoice School District, for the purposes and amounts listed, and with the funding sources as printed in Article Three of the warrant in I S O M.
Motion's been made in seconded. Is there discussion on Article Three? Seeing none, as we move to a vote, a reminder, this article requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, one. Three has passed with a clear two-thirds majority. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to establish fiscal year twenty-twenty-six spending allowance for the revolving funds set forth in Chapter thirty-four, subsection thirty-four five, authorized revolving funds of the town's general bylaws as follows, or take any other action relative thereto. I'm going to forego the reading of all the flags. Mr. Mayo?
The F A A recommends you pass Article Four recently.
Motion's been made in seconded. Is there discussion on Article Four? Seeing none, we'll move Article Four to a vote. All in favor, one. Four passes with a clear majority. Article Five, authorization to borrow public safety vehicles, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds, the sum of four hundred eighty-two thousand dollars and zero cents, or some such sum, for the purchase and for the purchase and equipping of five police cruisers and one fire chief vehicle, at the rate of one police cruiser per year, beginning in F Y. two thousand twenty-six, and one fire vehicle in two thousand twenty-six, and then one police cruiser in each subsequent fiscal year, including two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-nine, and two thousand thirty, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayo?
The F A A recommends that you appropriate the sum of four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for the purpose set forth in Article Five of the warrant. That to fund this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to general law, Chapter forty-four, subsection second, in I S O M.
Motion's been made in seconded discussion for Article Five. Yes, sir.
We just voted thirty million, like, hundred people. Last year was same thing, nobody even care about it. And I feel like Polish immigrant, it looks like my Polish, you know, communist country here. Like, we need to spend half a million for new toys for police department. Let's fix the old one. Half a million.
So your question is, why are we looking to replace them?
Why we spending? We got broken roads, we got dirty water, and you spend, just get them six hundred thousand.
So your question is, why are we spending money to make the purchase and not fix?
We have no money in Dudley, Dudley is broke.
Okay, so your question is, why are we spending money? We're asking to spend money for a purchase, so we're fixing the vehicles.
This would not add any vehicles, this would replace any existing vehicles. One eighty-seven thousand, and I keep going, seventy-one thousand, sixty-nine thousand. So basically, by purchasing one cruiser a year, it helps us maintain a decent fleet to make sure that when there's an emergency call at your house, that we're going to get to your house. You don't want us to break down the side road. Some of the older cruisers, we do use them for training, we use them for court, we use them for details, but the main ones that we rely on, we want to make sure that we get to your house, your business, when we need to. So this is why we're asking for that money, and it's approximately, this year it's about seventy-one thousand dollars for a new cruiser, but it's up to eighty-three. We're not going to ask for eighty-three thousand every year, but it just gives us some wiggle room for four years, five years from now, where inflation and everything else that, we can borrow up to eighty-three thousand per cruiser. And the fire vehicle, I believe it's going on fifteen years, correct?
Thanks, Chief Kowalski. Kowalski Fire, Chief, yeah, the fire vehicle is actually for the deputy chief inspector. The vehicle we're replacing is fifteen years old, has a hundred and forty thousand miles on it, the frame is rotting out of it, and I've spent thousands of dollars in repairs on it. So the repairs are going to end up costing you more money if we keep it than getting a new vehicle. I'm looking long-term, so, thank you.
Thanks, Chief Kowalski.
I am driving Lexus ninety-eight. I got two hundred and twenty-four thousand miles, and I'm happy with my car. Extra K, whatever, you decided, you decided. Meantime, this funny story, because the governor, Hilly, just borrowed three hundred fifty million dollars to put, retain it, a training center for police departments, three hundred fifty million just for that. And we here in Dudley have no money for bridge. And we here in that, they have no money for bridge.
You can take that up with the State House, sir. Right now, we're debating the question about the borrow for... Thank you. Is there any additional discussion for Article Five? Yes?
Hello, Tracy Casher from Mason Row. So just to clarify, with this half a million dollars, this would, you would not be looking for another vehicle or money for it until twenty-thirty, is that correct?
So the question is, are we looking for funding to buy the police cruisers?
For every year, they said. So that mean that they won't be looking for additional funds until after twenty-thirty?
Chief? That would be the plan. Uh, the last, uh, we, last time we were here, we did three cruisers in three years, um, and these are line cars, these are cars that, uh, are responding to your houses. I do not foresee any additional cars other than the ones we have right now. Now, if one breaks down earlier, something happens, so be it, but as long as we maintain them, we use a local, uh, mechanic, Rob's Auto, does a great job keeping up with our fleet, and, um, I'm hoping that this, this will keep our fleet in good condition, but if we decide not to purchase a vehicle every year, that's when we fall back, and at one point, uh, some of the residents here remember, we're purchasing two, three cars in one year, and that's what pushes us back. Uh, this is a plan to make sure that our fleet is in good running condition, and that way, we don't have to make those large purchases. This is one cruiser every year, and that's what the town supports us for.
Perfect, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Additional discussion, Article Five? Hold on, please, I got this gentleman at the mic, and you can go over there just a minute. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, I'm Jack World Hall, Pondike Road. I just have a question, is there gonna cost analysis between buying the vehicles or leasing the vehicles?
Chief? Thank you, Chief. Uh, you can have a real mic, sir.
No, no, you need to report to the mics, the audio recording, pick it up. I know your voice can, so does mine.
So I was just wondering...
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, Don Govin, Cardinal Drive. So I was just wondering, instead of having four-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars floating around in the budget for the next four years, why don't you just go year by year?
Chief? Or that money, um, for that specific cruiser, and the reason why I wanna make sure that we buy one every year is because when I reach out to the company that builds these cars for us, I, we have to give them a notice ahead of time, and put a car aside for us. Um, if I was to, uh, purchase a vehicle for next year, they have vehicles in the lot that, um, basically what happens is, it's your car, once you, you, you tell them that it's the car you're gonna purchase, it's your car. If not, they're gonna move on to a different department. Now you're looking at a possible twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six, the costs go up, so this just basically gives us a great idea of, uh, working with the, uh, the company to secure a vehicle for that fiscal year.
So, once you get this four-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars, then you will have five cruisers just waiting there for you?
No, we still have to notify the company, uh, around like February and...
No, but that's what I'm saying, like, you know, by February, never getting five cruisers, but then you have five cruisers that are still sitting there. You know what I'm saying?
No, no, we don't, we don't secure five cruisers all at the same time, we secure one...
So why do you need the money all at the same time, is my question, I guess?
It's just authorization of borrow, so we're not borrowing that four-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Additional discussion, Article Five? Yes, sir.
The budget is almost two million dollars. You know, squeeze eighty-thousand from that budget and buy that car? Yeah, last year was seventeen million, seven-hundred, this year is almost two million.
So the chief answered that question...
You know, the eighty-thousand, I don't think so, but I have two days.
He answered the question in terms of the plan to not utilize operating budget money for this, uh, where we can borrow to purchase the asset.
Additional discussion, Article Five? Yes?
John Brier, sixteen Claxton Road. Uh, just so people understand, this already too isn't like the town going out there tomorrow, borrowing half a million dollars and sitting in a bank account. What it basically does is prevents, you're basically getting pre-authorization to the town that, yes, we are committed, we are borrowing up to four-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand to buy the vehicles, and as the chief said, it's gonna be one vehicle annually for the next five years, and so then when the chief negotiates to try to get the best price for these cars, he can actually give a commitment, a five-year commitment, but each vehicle would be accrued one year after the other. So it's, he, the chief doesn't have to go back here a year after year to do it, and, uh, I would ask people to support this article, and the police chief runs a good department, they really never come here to ask for anything, and, uh, you know, these guys have a tough job out there, and given them safe, reliable, quick response vehicles, it's a wacky world out there. We see some of the stuff that's going on around town, so let's give them the best tools.
Thank you. Additional discussion for Article Five? Seeing none, we'll move Article Five to a vote. We are looking for a two-thirds majority. Word was that we had some difficulty with clickers, so we'll be putting this to a voice vote. This does require two... We're gonna go ahead and do this vote with a voice vote, we'll try one that's a majority with the clickers, so I can see it. I'm sorry? All right, I'll go with, I'll go with the "I'm not right" comment, um... Yeah, we'll get there. So I think right now, what we're gonna go ahead and do is just go over some general rules. Okay? So, when I'm speaking, please don't interrupt. When speakers are speaking, please don't interrupt. Please don't call out unless it's a specific point of order. We're gonna follow some decorum, we're gonna go ahead and follow the rules. If we're not familiar with the protocol calls, be happy to educate you outside the meeting, but we expect you to come and be able to do our business appropriately and properly. So we're gonna go ahead and utilize the clicker vote here, we'll go ahead and see how that lines up against our previous numbers, and if it doesn't satisfy the two-thirds majority, or there's a question with the totals, we'll go ahead and move it to a voice vote. Clear? Marvelous. So we'll go ahead and move this to a clicker vote, all in favor, one. All opposed, two. Okay, that's, that's well within reason of a two-thirds majority. Thank you. Article Five passes. Thanks to push me back to the clickers. Article Six. Employment contracts for non-union department heads to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter Seventy-four of the Town of Dudley general bylaws, personnel policies, and procedures by adding the following subsections, Section Seventy-four dash five. Personnel director, rules and regulations. The person, personnel director shall have the authority to negotiate and with the approval of Board of Selectmen, enter into employment agreements with department heads, non-union, sworn police officers, and the assistant and deputy fire chiefs. This authority will include the negotiation of salary which may exceed the maximum range allowed by the classification and compensation plan when necessary to recruit or retain qualified individuals, fringe benefits, and other conditions of employment, including but not limited to severance pay, relocation expenses, reimbursement for expenses, liability insurance, leave conditions of discipline, termination, dismissal, reappointment, and performance standards, or take any other action relative thereto. Whoop, Mr. Mayall?
Okay. The FAA recommends that we amend the general bylaws by adding a new subsection Seventy-four dash five C, as printed in the warrant, with the following change. In the first sentence, we're gonna add the clause "or other legal appointing authority", and after the phrase, "with the approval of the Board of Selectmen". So the sentence will now read, "The personnel director shall have the authority to negotiate and with the approval of the Board of Selectmen or other legal appointing authority, enter into employment agreements with the department heads, non-union, sworn police officers, and the assistant and deputy fire chiefs", in ISO move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on Article Six. Yes, Mr. Brier?
I'm not gonna speak to the merit of the article, and I don't know, this is more a question through the, through the moderator, to the town council, with the attorney general's view, that the personnel bylaw has pretty much passed muster there. Uh, the term "the personnel director" doesn't exist anymore, so should that just simply say... I'll go to town administrator?
Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Moderator, good evening, everyone. I think it could certainly be made as a friendly amendment to change that to town administrator, to the extent that there's any question. I, I do recall when we were, um, looking at the personnel bylaw amendments at the last meeting, there were different terms, personnel director, human resources manager, et cetera. If the expectation is that that is all gonna preside in one, uh, position, the town administrator, that could certainly be changed.
That makes a lot of sense to me, given that there was, I don't wanna call it confusion, but to Mr. Brier's point, the attorney general's review of, uh, the, the adjustments in the language, I think it's acceptable just to insert town administrator and place a personnel director, uh, for purposes of just clarity here, without any business. Mr. Brier, ma'am?
So I amend my motion to change personnel director to town administrator.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion about that? Marvelous, we have our article. Is there any discussion on the greater Article Six? All right, we move Article Six to a vote. This is a majority vote, uh, all in favor, one. All opposed, two. Article Five, Article Six, I'm sorry, Article Six passes with a clear majority. Article Seven, authorization to borrow Eagle Drive remediation to see if the town will vote to borrow the sum of three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and fifty-one cents, or other such sum, to purchase and maintain filtration equipment and other remedial measures to mitigate contaminated private wells within the Eagle Drive Fairview Avenue and surrounding neighborhood, including cap land full testing and monitoring costs required by DEP regulations, including all costs incidental or relative thereto, and to meet such appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow such sum under inconsistent with Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-four, such subsection seven or eight, or any other source of authority, and to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for such purpose, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayall?
The FAA recommends that you appropriate three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and fifty-one cents for the purpose set forth in Article Seven of the warrant, and that, to fund this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to general law, Chapter Forty-four, such, such Chapter seven or eight, and there any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town there for, in ISO move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion for Article Seven? Yes, sir. So you can go ahead and check.
Carved landfill testing. Landfill is not capped, there's no line there, that's why it's... I do everybody because I find out about that there is no line there. You fill out the wetland. I built that subdivision, and I know one day you have to destroy all, every house down there because it's gonna be polluted air there, polluted water you have now, and you guys just keep going. I talked to my lawyer, and he said, you know what, he said, let them do it, but we're gonna go after, after they finish, we're gonna go after town for millions, then you're gonna be broke.
So was your question about the validity of the language "cap landfill"? Okay, so your question, the cap landfill, got it. Okay. Yes, sir?
Dimitriska Jovis, Francis Drive. I'm a little bit confused about this, specifically, is it that the town has, is going to, um, fund private wells? Or at least, uh, maintain the filtration, um, equipment of, uh, people's private wells?
So the question, basically, what's the money for, and is the town maintaining the private wells? Uh, this is for cost mitigation related to the, uh, ensuring that the water is of an acceptable level with PFOS through the poet systems. Uh, the town's responsible for that at this point? So it will be the, um, responsibility of the homeowner? I'm gonna defer to Mr. Ruda on that.
Could you, Mr. Moderator, could you restate the question?
See, I'm trying to figure out why, oh, what the reason is that the town is going to maintain filtration equipment of private wells versus having the homeowners do it, find their wells.
So, one of the issues is that there are two priorities according to DEP that are responsible, that the DEP says is responsible for the contamination of those private wells. One of them is the town of Dudley's landfill, and that's why the town is required to pay to remediate, pay for these private systems. To end the issue tonight.
You said the landfill?
The landfill, the town.
So what, again, what is it with the landfill that's the issue?
The landfill wasn't the capped landfill, it's capped because the cap goes on the top, it goes the big line, which goes on the bottom, but it was capped twenty-five years ago, almost thirty years ago now, and at the time it was capped, it was capped in accordance with DEP regulations and was signed off on. Over the course of this last three decades, that landfill, uh, debris has leached into the groundwater, and it's contaminated private wells and private vehicles. There's also a business in town that is... There's also a business in town that is, for those contaminants, so the DEP is requiring the town. And that's not unusual, there are other sites in town here, right? Because they're deep by DEP.
Okay, so this amount is the town's share. What about the share of this company?
We have a fifty-fifty cost sharing agreement that we signed with, I mean, it's not a secret, it's Gentex. We have a fifty-fifty cost sharing agreement to pay for the remediation of Poet, the Poet Systems, and to clean up the, the area. The last two times we attempted to borrow that, we're here. So the town, so DEP is. So any absence of funding that we tried for in October and tried again for in February that failed at the town meeting, Gentex is now on hook for a hundred percent. This article is the paper we owe Gentex and bring us back in. Fulfilling our record deal.
Thank you for the discussion. Are additional questions for Article seven? Mr. Check. Oh, hold on, we've got another member of the community first.
David Nergen, sixty-eight Eagle Drive. To the moderator, to Mr. Ruda, how much do we owe Gentex? And is there a copy of this cost sharing agreement that we could give?
Mr. Ruda.
The total cost, the total cost voted projected from the end of county of twenty-five is three hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. It's the amount of the article. The cost sharing agreement is, I think we, because it's a legal document, I think we initially didn't. I think you have a copy of it.
Do you have a copy that you can drive to me right now so I can look over? Anybody? So nobody here can verify that we owe them money, that there's a cost sharing agreement?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I can verify that there is a cost sharing agreement with Gentex, where, again, they agreed to pay fifty percent of the costs, we agreed to pay fifty percent of the costs, and we are currently in default of that agreement, and if Gentex decides to come after us for that agreement, then there will be additional costs that maybe the town may be on the hook for.
Where can we find a copy of this agreement?
What we've got is established that we do have a legal agreement there. Question addressed. Additional discussion for Article seven. Yes, Mr. Check, go back around.
I just received a registered letter from the DP Houston. They want to test water in my apartments on Fairview Avenue, and it's three or four people living there, and it's going to be polluted, it's going to cost more money. Then you got Polar Lake, it's polluted too, because they're going to start testing those houses too. It's been that cancer is going core. It's not only this way, it's going to go in circle, right? The water is going to go nicely around, and you guys doing nothing. I got one more, I got, from my, from my, I'm just going to give you some advice, what I think is very well, best way to fix that problem is just remove whole dump site from this side next to what the lake. It's going to, I, I figure out going to take a couple years, no more than two million.
I, I think it's worth discussion in a couple of years, and we'll see what the town says for the cost associated to removal of the dump. I think it's a great thing to look at. I had additional question for Article seven, Mr. Carmini.
Kathy Karmini, forty-nine Airport Road. I'm just trying to get that.
That's the cost share from what was described earlier. Gentex would be responsible for that amount, we're responsible for that amount, three forty-nine, two eighty-four, fifty-one.
Close to seven hundred thousand.
This is the amount that we are reimbursing them to fulfill our commitment for the fifty percent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Ruda. Just for perfect clarification.
Just to clarify, the total amount is three forty-nine, two eighty-four. The grand total of unpaid and what we project we will owe Gentex is one sixty-sixty. The cost of safe well, those are the people who, that does the company, that does the system, and does the testing, is ninety-three thousand, four fifty-five. The cost of the LSP, which is the site engineer estimated July first, twenty-twenty-five through the end of the year, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, is eighty-nine thousand. So total unpaid and projected is one sixty-six. Safe well, the actual company that installs the filtration systems, ninety-three. The cost of the LSP site professional is eighty-nine thousand for grand total of three forty-nine, which is all the way.
Can I just get clarity? So for the last two numbers that you talked about, is that the, is that our share of that cost, or is Gentex not paying for that portion?
Gentex is currently paying all of it. It's, it's what we projected to owe Gentex from November, when it failed the first time, and I have the October special, till the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so you're saying?
For the town, it'd be three forty-nine, two eighty-four, including reimbursing Gentex for what we currently owe and what we are projected to spend until the end of the year. So yes, the answer is three hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-four thousand, fifty-one cents for the town's share of the cost, plus reimbursing Gentex for paying the town's share of the cost. So you're, fifty-fifty share, fifty-fifty agreement? This brings us up to date with paying, paying Gentex for what we currently owe and for what they projected we'll owe at the end of the fifth of the calendar. Ms. Breyer. Remember that number, three forty-nine, two eighty-four? There's a lot of noise out there, right? We shot this down in November, I don't really think so, because I was, you know, I wasn't really digging into the issue. This is what it costs to monitor fifteen, twenty-five. Liability, it's already incurred. This portion, we have to pay. It's, the next article is what we can't do about it, going to fall, but this one is owed. Good people pay their bills.
Mr. Breyer, additional discussion, Article seven. Hand at the back, new voice, come on.
So someone was mentioning about the landfill that was capped. It's leaching, so.
Ms. Nixon, it's a really good question, but in terms of this article, where we're looking to address the costs associated to this, that's right now?
I'm just wondering, okay, so it's not really related to this bill in particular?
Correct.
So that it's just going to keep getting worse? This is a Band-Aid solution to the problem?
Or paying the bill that's owed because of?
Okay, I guess my question's related to the next article, then.
Yes, sir.
Through the chair, I mean, good moderator, to Richard the Collector, treasurer?
Mr. Karmini.
Mr. Karmini. Will we be able to borrow this without debt exclusion and our capital override?
Mr. Karmini.
This is an authorization to borrow. The source of funding can be through a gent line item, it could be debt excluded. This is a one-to-five-year borrowing, depending on the way the market works. So if the answer is yes, you can be able to. It's the nature of it, only allows you to go on five years. The next question is going to be for the fourteen point two, you're going to get it tomorrow. The answer is yes, you can do whatever you like.
Additional questions, comments, Article seven. Seeing none, we'll put Article seven to a vote at this time. This is a two-thirds vote. Before we declare an affirmative or negative vote, we'll go ahead and verify the number of totals. We'll go ahead and put Article seven to a vote at this time, all in favor of one, all opposed two. Thank you. Article seven is done. Article eight, authorization to borrow Eagle Drive Neighborhood Water Main Extension Construction to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of fourteen million, two hundred thousand dollars to pay costs for the construction phase of the Eagle Drive Neighborhood Water Main Extension Project and the payment of all other costs incidental and relative thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter forty-four, subsection seven and eight, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. All or any portion of this borrowing may be obtained through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, or through bonds procured by the town. The town administrator acting on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and treasurer and any other appropriate official of the town are authorized to execute and deliver any and all agreements and other documents that may be required by the trust or by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in connection with any financing to be obtained through the trust. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, chapter forty-four, section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a linked amount and to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust or otherwise, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Ma'am.
The FAA recommends you approve Article eight as written, borrowing to be for a maximum term of, allowed by law, thirty years and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator to pursue all possible forms of grants, reimbursements, cost-sharing settlements, settlements, and or restitution from any and all other potentially responsible parties as determined by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, with any such reimbursements, cost-sharing settlements, or restitution payments being utilized to pay down the amount borrowed. And I so move.
Motion's been made in second. Discussion for Article eight.
Is the board of directors an amendment to the treaty? Or is it, or do you just?
No, he read it the way it was. What he was doing was putting a condition on the borrowing, to outline that it was a thirty-year, uh, borrow.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. All the motion does is clarify some circumstances for the borrowing, which includes that it be for the maximum useful life, as Mr. Karmini indicated when he was talking about the prior article, and also to authorize the select board and the town administrator to pursue any and all avenues for possible cost-sharing reimbursements and otherwise that may help to defray the total amount that the town borrows. So that was, that last part was not in the article. The idea behind this additional language of motion is to, you know, be clear that town meeting would like to see those additional avenues pursued.
In addition to what has already been pursued through grants and town sharing?
Discussion or questions for Article eight?
I just have a question though, this is. Fourteen point two mil. What, what will be the final cost after thirty years?
Mr. Karmini. I was doing the math, but my fingers ran out there, sorry. I think the question was, at interest rate X, what is the final, what is the total cost after thirty years?
Good evening, Rich Karmini, treasurer, collector. There's two components of this borrowing. It's fourteen point two million total. As of today, the town has been approved for ten million eighty-five through the SRF, the State Revolving Fund. I have a draft scheduled with zero interest and a principal forgiveness, giving a total payback. My glasses aren't as good. Sure. Nine point three four nine million, the four point one one five, which is, it's considered ineligible costs. It means the project as it stands has a state component, and then things that fall outside of that but are necessary. I would defer to the people of Ty and Bond to sort of draw that delineation. However, I have the schedule for the four point one one five. Again, this is market rate, and if we were to do this in the next month, this is a good example. We are up to six point nine six million. We are up to six point nine six million. So when we add the two together, that's what it's going to be.
This is Mr. Faulkner.
Uh, the town has applied for and has received the next step to a SRF loan, zero percent interest, and up to nine point nine point nine million. Uh, the SRF program, as the town treasurer mentioned, is... The work that is to occur on the roadway is considered SRF-eligible. The work that is gonna happen on private parcels is considered SRF-ineligible. Uh, ten million and eighty-five thousand being eligible. Four point one one five million is being ineligible. Of the eligible amount of ten million and eighty-five thousand, the nine point nine percent principal forgiveness is nine hundred and ninety, ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. If you add the difference, you end up with a project adjusted cost of thirteen million, two hundred and one thousand, five hundred... According to the cost-share agreement that was mentioned earlier, there's a fifty-fifty expected split, of which the town share would be six million, six hundred thousand. The ineligible component of the project, the town would have to, at market rate, Mr. Carmignani was able to obtain an estimated drawdown of that. And to add one more thing, the, uh, the option of maintaining the permits over a seventy-five-year period, which is the water main, would be one hundred and fifteen million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand.
How do you get here, those numbers for ten million fifteen? Who gave you those numbers? You just figure out from the air? Because I know it's gonna be thirty million. I know. I am being cross-tachoner. I ought to finalize the first section on Eagle Drive. We put a water main on Joseph Street. And now you got, it's rags all over the place. It's impossible to do it. Then you have to put new roads there, grinded, put new roads all over the place. Because you're gonna make so many cuts. It's electricity under the road. And you're talking fourteen million? Are you joking? You're just telling people, oh, just voted, yeah, yes. I don't know what you're gonna do, right? This is, nobody asked me about permission to even come to do the road. Nobody called me. Why you can call me, ask me, Greg, what's the story with that? You're just ignoring me completely. I spent forty-five years to build, to build that subdivision. And now everything is screwed up because of your dump site. And you got a lot of friends here, I know, that happened last year. They just voted. Nobody here, I'd like. Empty people. They don't care. They raised taxes on my apartment. I went to Richie. Why you raised taxes on my apartment, five thousand in one year? I don't know. I don't know. It's, it's proposition two and a half, you know, I understand. It's two and a half percent. You cannot go higher than that. Why I got fifty percent, five thousand more? And most of them got it, but nobody cared. Go find a second job, good luck. Pay for work, or pay for you guys. You just raise your money, more pay, more money. Look at how much money you make. Mr. Rudin, how much you got? Hundred seventy-five now?
Thank you, Mr. Shaki. Yes, Sonny Ile.
Hi, Caitlin Osher, thirty-five, wherever you have. So, just to confirm, does the town own the road or does Mr. Chojnaki own the road?
So, I'd actually like to take that question and merge it to what was in my head. The, you know, the owning of the road. Eagle Drive is a private road. Why does the town, or how does the town have the authority to construct a water line on it? Does that kind of capture the...
Sort of. I'm just wondering if this number accounts for potential legal fees.
Okay. Mr. Rudin, Mr. Dazza, Mr. Sullivan. For proof from the previous meetings, that you want to answer with your research, at that point, I don't believe proof was ever brought forward.
As, as, the town doesn't own the road. Okay. But we are still on the hook for remediating the contaminated water. So, as we talked about with the receipt, for what's been incurred to date, and does it have this... Um, the fourteen point two million dollars, but as Mr. Faulkner explained. So, throughout, if this article's approved, we will need to move forward with taking, you know, whether or not we need to... Water main, that will have to be done.
Okay. No, I understand the town's responsible regardless. Will anything change if proof does come forward that...
Well, again, we, DEP has already determined that the town...
No, 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 as far as the cost, I mean. So I'm assuming the cost will arise with legal fees, if he doesn't want people digging in the road, despite DEPs maybe, because of...
Well, we would, the town would be taking, right? And if, if the owners are gonna challenge that, yes, that may increase your costs.
Okay. And second part of my question, so, um, since it's...
Very good question. Is anybody capable of thinking about it?
I mean, I'll just say that, again, this is the legal, not the technical. But there, there are, as my understanding is, is that the landfill is being tested or the, all of your water, your drinking water, is tested in accordance with all of the applicable state standards.
Okay.
Right? So, I, I'm not a, that's beyond my area of expertise, is what all of those require. But that's part of it.
That incident, I'm just having a cat.
I think the moderator's saying that that's probably a question.
Okay, thank you.
Question, questions for Article eight? Yeah, come on down.
Hi, Eva Natski, thirty-seven Eagle Drive. We saw the public ancestor who actually owns the road. You're saying now that the individual homeowner is going to set the road? So my question would be, after the town goes and makes a mess of the road by messing it all up, just like the children boys are have, who's responsible for repaving it? Because then it falls, apparently, to Greg, who then has to spend millions of dollars to repay and fix the mess, yet per the town, right now, Greg doesn't own the road. Ted doesn't own the road. So there's a lot of legal issues which apparently have not been made clear at all. And the secondary question is, I'm sitting there listening to it, and none of these people, since it's a totally have... Pay for it's coming after these houses, and is being almost proposed as, oh, it's me, all your fault. My, my question too is, Gen Tex is a private company. If they're equally at fault, why aren't they more on the hook for this? And the citizens of the town who did nothing to this and now have had their water polluted and continues to be polluted because the landfill is still existing? You know, I just foresee quite a lot of legal action down the line. And I do believe, personally speaking, obviously, my last name's the same as Greg, my father Ted, that there has been so much lack of clarity here, that things just get passed and we get a letter in the mail and no one's able to answer this one. Greg and Ted Hanatski have been maintaining it, plowing it every single winter. We call the town, the town says, no, we can't plow it. So is that now going to fall on you, seeking legal advice personally on the side? Is that now going to be in the winter, well, we have to inform the residents of subdivision that town says we don't own it legally, we're out of the gates, maintain it? There's, there's conflicting issues here. Own it, we don't. The resident's owner, we don't. Why have you been maintaining it, would not be personally? Why have been maintaining and plowing it every winter? Why is the town consistently telling? And also, there was a lawsuit back in nineteen ninety-nine with a judge, actually, there was a judge who was saying that Conrad Allen, Paula Lee, they actually had trespass on private property. So, there was an injunction, but that's not the issue here. It was a term that this is actually owned by Greg and Ted. So there are multiple issues here. My concern is, of course, the road is going to be messed. I think people around the town of Dudley look how worse they're at when they did there with the new water line. It's a big mess. And I know the law is to replace it. Once you come in, you take by a domain, and I guarantee you that it's going to be, it's very taking, so no payment is going to be made with whoever actually is established to own the road. I can guarantee that's gonna happen, temporary taking, just like the, the holes that are being poured into the road with that. Oh, no damages are going to be assessed. You want to argue with it, go to court, which we will have to do. It's going to be a huge mess, and then who's gonna be on the hook for that, going in and repaving the road after the fact? And spending an exceedingly more amount, because I can predict it based on just looking around the town, again, I'm being repetitive here. It's a mess. It's going to cause more to re-put that seven K we down than it currently does now. So millions of dollars after the fact, the town is going to want for subdivision, who is now, you're saying, doesn't actually own it, that the homeowners are, then the homeowners are gonna be hooked for repaving it? There's, there's such a lack of clarity here. I don't believe that it's been clear on top of it. I would, you know, why? Why are you telling the town to pay for something that Gen Tex and the town of Dudley has done to the tone of fifteen, fifteen, fourteen million and change? That's just my question. I think there are a lot of issues here that haven't been clear, continue to be probably clear. There's just a lot of issues here that I foresee a lot.
All right, you've got three questions in there. One was, who pays for the paving of the road after the water main project? What's Gen Tex's culpability in this? And the third was, winter maintenance, who's responsible for that? Is there anybody from the town of Dudley who can address these three? Mr. Rudin?
The town of Dudley is the community. It was thirty years ago, not many of us were using it. But we all contributed to, in some ways, it. From the fifties on, people don't, whenever we had, there was no problem with that back then. Now we find ourselves fast-forwarding today in the wonderful modern world. It was appropriately closed by DEP back in two thousand. One, two, it was they had the final closure. We closed, we closed it in accordance with what DEP required. And it didn't require a line to be put in at the time, and we didn't have a sign. But to answer the question, why is the community on the road? Here's the community to answer. And it's, it's no more Gen Tex's fault than the town's landfill. I wish they could say otherwise. We didn't do anything on thirty years ago. But the fact of the matter is, we used it, so come here. And putting a water line eliminates the... If you put in a water line, you eliminate the... Got first word? And if there's a question about...
With regard to paving for the water main on roadway, what typically happened is during the active construction period, the trench would be paved, and then we call that temporary pavement. The trench is, the temporary trench is, and a permanent trench is reinstated. That trench would be subject to the, likely the best part of the remaining road, you know, the existing road that's in protection. It's in whatever current condition it's in. So likely that the permanent trench would be...
Thank you. Mr. Zakowski?
Catherine Street. To feed off of what the town administrator just said, the bottom line is, we are the town of Dudley. That's it. Nothing happens in the town of Dudley that we don't take responsibility for and so forth. But I just wanted to speak to the cost. The amount that here is fourteen point two million. Over, and this is through the SRF, or the Clean Water, Clean Water Trust. SRF is State Revolving Fund. Over the last five years, the Water Commission, Water Sewer Commission has entered into three, has accomplished three projects using SRF funding. All three of them were engineered and had engineering oversight by the same engineering firm that's here now, tied along. The first one was an inflow and infiltration project for the sewer department. The total amount asked for was one point two million. These are rough numbers because they're going, I'm going from memory, but they're not that far off. One point two million. The total payoff was nine hundred thousand, under. The second one was Mason Road, the Mason Road Water Project. It was a combination of that. It was a combination of that, the rehab of our station one, which is on West Main Street, and the rehab of the water tanks on Mason Road. That total cost was five, total ask, the number there, was five point six million. The total pay, what we are paying off is four million, again, under. It was under budget. And then the last one is the current one, the treatment plan that we just built on the Boston Road. And the water main to connect our station one on West Main Street to it. That total ask, total ask, the number up there, was eleven point two million. What we are responsible for at the end is approximately nine. The point I'm trying to make here is, we're asking for a big chunk of money there. Aside from cost sharing with, with Gentex and whatever other funding sources we get, that's the tougher, the larger amount. Time Bond has done us well so far. They've given us good information. They've been very conservative about how they have bid these projects out and how we have asked for money from the revolving fund. They've asked for fourteen point two. I am back, I, I am accepting that and we will be under that somewhere, somewhere. I don't know how much. I can't predict that. So that fourteen, it, it, it's a big number. Divide everything up. I think that will be lower than that. The other, the other, one other thing that I wanted to say, that last project that we have, the treatment plan, we started that in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. We built that plan for about six million dollars. By starting then, the next town, Lord Webster, is building two plans right now. They're, they're in the middle of it right now, one on Bigelow Road, and they have to build one down near the beach. Their current costs are at forty million dollars. Six million to forty million. Okay, if we divide the forty million, twenty million. It's from six million to twenty million in four years, four to five years. That's a huge jump. They're not getting the, the
What's this have to do with the article, Stowe?
What's that?
What's this have to do with the article?
It has, it has everything to do with the article.
Yeah, I, I agree. You've got ten seconds, Mr. Zakus.
Okay, I'll, I'll wrap it up. So the, the, the point is that this cost will only go up.
Thank you. Mr. Derrick, can you hand up? And then we'll come down to Mr. Frank and we'll pop over here and we'll pop up to the back.
Mr. Ruda said that the town followed all the procedures when closing the dump. You did not go up with a post-closure monitoring plan like you're supposed to back in nineteen ninety-six when Susan Horn was the town administrator. He came up with a post closure monitoring plan in two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Ruda. Was there a post closure monitoring plan between nineteen ninety-six and
Post closure plan between ninety-six and two thousand twenty-one?
Also, Hallway and Circle Drive, there are no owners.
Answer him.
These, these questions are for you, Mr. Ruda. You fired the LSP.
Well, do the best we can to answer. I'm trying to capture the questions so I know what's being asked. So we've got the post closure monitoring plan and then the what?
Hallway and Circle Drive, they were ordered back from the, back onto this project by the DEP shortly after the February meeting.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Ruda.
They haven't been tested since March two thousand twenty-one. So the grant was applied. Uh, that's not true. That is not true.
The other, the other thing you asked before was the monitoring. The other question was, well, the other statement you made was that I fired the LSP. I didn't fire the LSP.
You told them that we didn't have the money to pay.
The town meeting didn't and the authority says you're not going to pay.
So will we be paying for LSP services for Circle Drive and Hallway?
That's outside the scope of this article. We're located at Far East Eagle Drive.
Article, we're, we're, we're voting for this, this fourteen million dollars is to solve our problem. It's to solve our DEP problem. So we still have to pay the, the Hallway services and LSP services?
Mr. Sullivan.
So I have up my hand a publicly available document on the DEP website. And if you've got a pen or a pencil and you want to enter it into your phone, dash zero zero I'll say it again, two dash zero zero two two one one nine. I'm not going to sue us at our national headquarters, but it's addressed to LSP. It's also addressed to a gentleman named Mr. Frieder. D E R, and he's known as president of the Sioux Gentex. So previous speaker spoke about Hallway. And I'm not going to read the whole letter, it's an incident. In this letter, Gentex asked to exclude the Hallway from testing. Gentex had their site plan, uh, official LSP. Questions? So they wanted an IRA plan modification. Again, this is beyond my scope. So the IRA plan modification, they were talking about the clean the areas that they reference with thirty-six fifty-three, twelve nineteen, thirty-two. On the backside, it comes out next to my eyes. So Gentex wanted to discontinue testing. DEP totally couldn't. Again, it's easily available. You can read it. The LSP notified us that the official term of use is resigned. Semantics if you want, it was a question of funding. We didn't, we don't, didn't happen. This board, the general W M, on time. Second, the DEP reagreed. The cautionary agreement was negotiated on behalf of the Gentex. And again, I, I can only speak and what was said in public. Attorney Blake was here three minutes ago at this meeting. We, the lady before said that it's the town of Dudley. We are the town of Dudley. I wasn't hearing. I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't hearing. That when that landfill was closed. The question that the previous speaker asked about the post closure plan. I don't know. That, that's outside my scope. The interim president. Sean Healy, he had with the LSP. I'm sorry that I don't have the answer. And I'm not sure about the post closure. All I know is it was done in accordance with the time. And I have a copy of an email that the previous speaker was on. He married you, Pixley, who was also the president at Southern. It says clearly, it's giving me for a minute, just connecting to a public water system would eliminate the exposure while Poet's only mitigates the exposure. And the licensed site professionals for the sites submits the evaluations to the testing. So the DEP splitting the semantics can't order a water line, but clearly the ladies
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
I'll start off with, usually when there's a capital expense from the water department that's paid through, the, the water to be satisfied, this is not, this is an exception to that. Is that correct? This is going to be paid for by the whole town, not just the water users. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then who's going to administer this project? Is it going to be the selectmen's office therefore, or is it going to be the water department?
So who administers the project?
Yeah, this, this, who's going to oversee the, all this construction of the water line and stuff?
So the G C would be.
Yeah, I mean, who's going to sign off on, on the work? Is it the, is it the town administrator, the selectman, or is it the, or is this all the water department? And then just, as he's coming up. Who's going to own this water line at the end if we don't own the road? Who owns the, the pipe underneath it in the end?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, for you. Uh, administer the project, so, so we I'm sure the town is involved in the departments. Other town departments are involved in the water department. Conservation Commission will be involved, the Health Department will be involved, Building Department will be involved, looks probably others. Is there a second part to that question?
Yeah, who's going to own this water line and, you know, therefore be responsible for maintaining it? If it's on private property.
So I might defer to town council, but the public water supply you know, consider the public water main. Water main that's on private parcels would be responsible.
Okay, but since the homeowners own to the middle of the stream, does that mean
Thanks, Mr. Fox.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. My understanding and expectation is that there would be an easement that the town would need to take to cover the water line.
Okay.
Sorry.
He's saying it's a temporary easement.
So there's been temporary easements thus far for, I think there's some testing, but there would be anticipated a permanent easement that would need to be taken.
Okay, and so my next question through you, Mr. Moderator, is, um, once we put this water line in, are the homeowners have to hook up to it, or can they just say, we don't want to, we don't want to be on the town of Dudley water line and therefore you have to continue, um, the stuff that you're doing now, you know, the, the private
It's a good question. Thank you. By way of taking it back in October. So that's, that's done just so these town meetings are already authorized, the, the taking of that utility easement. So the question was, uh, once the water line is installed and functional, are residents required to, uh, accept town water services? And if not, will the town continue to provide Poet's, uh, services and filtration services? Mr. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's my understanding that from DEP's position, once the town does this water line and folks don't want to tie into the water line, then that, the, the, the town will no longer be responsible to do the Poets. Basically, if we've given you an option for a permanent remediation and you don't accept it, then that's your choice.
Okay, and then if I can, I just want to clarify, there was a lot of questions about when the landfill was capped, what was saying that, you know, we're talking about spending a lot of money here and I know that people don't like to do, you know, we don't, nobody likes to do that. But at the time we capped the landfill, I think that was like a good twenty years ago or longer, twenty-five years ago, that we had the option of putting in a leachate collection system at the bottom. And, um, as part of that project and that town meeting, we, town meeting, we, um, voted against doing that because it would have involved putting in a, a sewer pipe up Indian Road to bring that leachate back up and put it into the sewer system. So it would have been very small money compared to this fourteen million. So sometimes it does pay, it, you know, we should, we should consider, like somebody mentioned, it, it's fourteen million versus a hundred ninety-nine million if we don't do it. So, um, I think that's a good example. We missed, you know, we, we made the wrong decision twenty-five years ago for, that was probably, you know, like a hundred thousand dollars or something. We could have not had this. We would have had a leachate collection system at the bottom of the landfill.
You're about number seven right now.
Um, I'm really fifty-three Eagle Drive. We're just wondering after, if this project is approved, if it goes through after the fact? Now that it's unclear who owns the road, who maintains the road after the fact? Our kids, you know, when they're going to the bus stop in the morning, the buses can't come around that corner.
Thank you for bringing that around. I had to note that, that one wasn't addressed.
Excuse me, I just want to clarify my earlier comments. Like, like, the point I tried to bring forward was Attorney Blake asked the previous speaker if they could provide proof. I mean, you should defer to him, but Attorney Blink.
That would require that the road be, you know, be taken to the sound.
That is a separate legal issue than the water line issue, right? I mean, it may not make much sense, you know, the water lines go underneath the road and then you have to throw it on top, but they are two separate legal questions. And so all that this article is focusing on is the water line that runs underneath the road. As Mr. Faulkner said, the project itself includes repaving the road, but if there's a desire to have that road accepted as a public way thereafter, that is a separate legal process.
Thank you. All right, I didn't really lose track of my hands. I definitely was coming over here, and then I was coming here, and now it's gone. We'll make it up as we go.
Martin Kichlinski, 42 Eagle Drive. So I live in the neighborhood and there are a lot of long driveways there, you know, people have nice landscaping, at least 30% of residents have sprinkler systems. So to connect residents to the water line in the street, I'm assuming we would have to cut through driveways and go through landscaping.
Mr. Faulkner.
Mr. Moderator, through you. Yes, it does. The budget established is inclusive. Preferably not in the driveway. It's the backyard, so the water service. Coordination with the homeowner.
And my follow-up question is, so the water lines are, go through driveways, so the driveway's going to be fully rebuilt, or only the cuts made will be?
Look, each one would be determined on a case-by-case basis. To one side, but if it's right up the middle, it's like... The intent is not to provide any damage from that perspective.
Thank you. Yes, over here.
Yep.
Bottled water for the houses still being the town water. So has that problem been addressed?
Mr. Skouski. The water that flows through the pipes in the town of Dudley is tested on a weekly, bi-weekly, monthly basis for all sorts of contaminants, chemicals, whatever. And everything is to the current DEP specs, federal specs for public drinking. As far as P5s, we are at non-detectable, which is below the detectable limit. Just for... We test for all sorts of chemicals and other contaminants. Anything that, nothing is... Right now, the water is clear. I've got a bottle right there. That's what I'm drinking. The water is clean. It has been. Some folks are still... The treatment plan filters everything, just about everything.
Thanks, Mr. Skouski. Yes, sir.
James Sprinker, Tenleys Lane. I was on the Board of Health here in Dudley at the time. Landfill was closed. The cap on that landfill was not intended. Meant to be a liner for new landfill. What's there? It does so good as well. And it would have cost that to pump any leachate back up to the street, so it's so good. Underneath that cap, there is no liner at the bottom. So this problem could be... But like I said, this is not to me.
No, but thanks for the clarification.
Joel Fuster, Mill Road. Good evening, old person. So the project is projected to cost 14.2 million dollars. It said, what, it's 10 million dollars? Is the whole amount going to be? That would mean what the town is responsible for, 6.6 million? Six million dollars left over to go to the water.
All right, Mr. Kamanyani, got the calculated fine up?
Thanks, Mr. Fuster.
Good evening. To the previous speaker's question, the 10 million dollars is part of the state revolving fund. You will use up to 10.085 million dollars for the project. If the project isn't as expensive, you won't borrow as much. The 9.9% principal forgiveness is baked in off of the total expenditure, and right now, everything is expected to be a zero interest rate. For the non-qualified, 4 million dollars, again, we may borrow up to the 4.1 at a market rate, and we're borrowing what we expect to use. We're not going to have any money in reserve to make any payments for anything with one exception. The language in here makes mention of a premium on the non-SRF portion. The state would not offer you a premium. It's when you go to market, you would get a premium as a component on some of the borrowing. What you would look to do for any of that is just reduce the amount and the term. So you go, if you had a premium because someone expected something to happen in the market, they were looking to get X for an interest rate at a certain point coming out, you would simply just take the premiums in and put it against the total authorization. So inevitably, you'd get 4.1 million dollars worth of project and debt for a smaller amount. So at the end of the day, you would have a small unspent premium. Appropriation for something else.
Okay, thank you. That was the final part of the question. Thank you. So the total impact on property taxes? The question was property taxes.
First year total annual payments, we have... 359,000 dollars plus... 700,000 is going to be what would be added to the budget? The cost sharing would go... 350,000, if you wanted to circle back to a previous article. That's the approximate dollar amount for the first year.
So the, just, the clear question was, and if it can't be answered right now, that's okay. The clear question was, for the average property tax bill, what's the impact to this project? And if we don't have an answer, that's okay.
Probably don't have an answer. You have, what, a 17 and a half million dollar levy, and you're earning 350,000, but it's not apples to apples because it's not a bell curve for evaluation. You have a median, you have an average home value, but it's not likely a median. So not at this time, but that's the approximate bottom line. Your next year's budget would go up.
So over the 30 years, though, there was a number that Mr. Faulkner shared that was approximately 115 million dollars for the maintenance and continued upkeep of the Poet's systems. Okay, so it's a conversation about 14.2 overall. Specific information at this time because we haven't...
It would increase the treasuries budget for the debt service approximately 350,000.
Okay, great, thank you.
Follow-up, more comment?
Follow-up, so I guess we don't know what that's going to raise us in terms of taxes. That's fine, I guess. But at the last meeting was mentioned that DEP could potentially, what, force our hand even if we vote against this today and make us do the project anyways? And it was said that it could potentially be doubled or triple the cost of this project. And in that case, I mean, taxes would go exponentially much higher.
The question, the DEP comes in and if this fails... So the DEP comes in and says the town must do it at X expense. That could have more significant impact on the taxpayers. Yes, that effect, it's going to, will that happen, or is it pretty much going to happen? Mr. Dazem. That's a really good question.
So thank you, Mr. Moderator. To the previous speaker, you have correctly, I think, stated something that was discussed in one of the prior public hearings, is that DEP does have some regulatory authority here, which can include up to triple the cost.
Right.
And in addition, if this were to go to a court proceeding, there's also the possibility of interest being added. So again, there's added, I mean, you know, it won't, it's either going to be pay it now or pay it later.
Either we do it or we do it, and this would probably be the cheaper option.
I mean, I think you can certainly forecast that there would be additional costs, whether it be through the DEP and or through court proceeding, plus attorney's fees and all that.
Thank you. Thank you. Coming up. Thanks to your patience. I've been in trucking for 30 years, and I got to tell you, 14,000 dollars is a lot of dirt. It's getting rid of it. It's expensive, Mr. Moderator. It's $92 a ton in Ohio. I'm also in refuse business. Anywho, so... So your question was related to Paula Lane, the Paula Lane area? A little bit of the other streets. We're dealing with pollution, and we're saying that DEP is telling us to do this. But the DEP said to get... Our line doesn't stop pollution. It's just a mandate. So if we're spending this kind of money, why don't we spend the money to get rid of the problem? I'll let Mr. Faulkner address you. Your question is the point.
Mr. Moderator, thank you through you. Circle Drive and Paula Lane was considered. We did a conceptual memo for the town, which listed Circle Drive, Paula Lane as an add alternate, construction term for a component of the project that could be added on. Unfortunately, the funding source that is being... Circle Drive, Paula Lane would not have drinking water regulatory limits. The article that you're voting on does not disallow... Separate modified requirements to the town, but at this point in time, it does not include in it, disqualifying you. Yes, it is one, but it's not a complete... No, I get it. My dirty diapers are in that landfill. I get it.
Mr. Faulkner.
Mr. Moderator, I'll just add to that. The current, the project is being funded through grants and loans, and the town has to work within the framework that the...
to work within the framework that the grants and loans offer the town. So it would be nice to get that other component potentially solved, but that's just not in the framework that is available to the town right now.
At the the previous speaker's point, I I too have diapers. I think I think this is part of the larger conversation, right? As we think about the town of Dudley and where we need to move forward, not only do we need to put mitigation strategies in effect now, but we also have to address some of the decisions that were made in the past and get some corrective action. Yeah, without a doubt, not a bad question. It's just, you know, we're going to be adding a lot of conversation to this topic, so we're going to go back to the Article Eight, as it was, Mr. Brier, and then Mr. Frank can come back up around if he wants to.
I think many of us have heard of saying, right, the butterfly effect, that a butterfly in like California's flutter its wings can eventually create a typhoon over in Japan. Well, what we've experienced here, and the reason why I bring that up as an example is that every action, every decision that we make reverberates throughout our life and has consequences. And consequences come usually at the most inopportune times. Our ancestors left us a lot of beautiful things in town, and in this country, the landfill is not one of them. That's that's, we're inherited this. The good news is, I think everyone here, we are the town, and whether we caused the problem or not, the others did cause the problem, right? And then one day, we will be others, like our town. At the end of the day, you asked about the tax rates, all right? With a fifty percent cost share over thirty years, it's about two thousand dollars on a four and seventeen thousand dollar house today, all right? So thirty years, it's going to be two thousand dollars, well, it's about seventy-eight dollars a year they're going to be paying for for the for the town's share of this. That's assuming a fifty percent cost share. If there is no cost share, you double it. So it would be about four thousand dollars over thirty years is what it's going to cost the average homeowner in, all right? The poet's system, you know, if you get away with poets for the next thirty years is about seventeen hundred dollars per household, and you double that if there's no cost share. Diane Bond had an estimate of seventy-five years, and their number was out there. But remember that three hundred and eighty thousand dollar number that we just voted on? That's what we're paying. That's coming out somewhere for fifteen poets. I I got involved originally because I wanted to prove that poets was a big deal, right? Well, you get to your number, throwing a hundred ten thousand dollars manage all these poets. I don't want to spend fourteen million dollars on a water line if we don't have to. But as I dug into the the numbers and I got to the noise, it's noise. It's not real, a hundred and ten, I mean, what we voted on is a real number, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and that's for fifteen, twenty poets. And you have to increase that to every house in the neighborhood, whether or not they tested, if you're going to do a system like that. And at the end of the day, the water line's a no-brainer. And let me explain why. Because there is a cost share, and you've got six million dollars, right, fourteen point two, right? You go do everything. It's interest-free. And the reason why Mike made the motion earlier is because we want to make sure it was for the maximum term, interest-free. When they talk about this other loan for four million dollars, which is at four and a half percent, we are not obligated to take that loan. If Gentex, see, what they can't talk about is the negotiations and the litigation and mediation strategies going on behind closed doors right now, because they're part of it. They can't disclose that stuff, but those are ongoing. There is a negotiation between Gentex and the town on who's going to pay what and how you're going to pay. So is Gentex, at the end of the day, right, they're fifty percent responsible. Are they going to pay annually, or are they going to just give them off some check? That has to be determined. If they give them off some check, well, why the heck would you take out a four million dollar loan at four and a half percent if you just apply it to that and get the zero percent loan? Why couldn't you incorporate Circle and Polo? They've got the numbers. So once the construction begins and all that's finalized, you gotta tie them in. But but it's, there's so many facets to this. You just can't put it all together. There is no magic bullet. We have inherited a problem, and our role here tonight is how do we make sure the people are drinking safe water and bathing their kids in clean water? All we can do is run the water line. We can't force anybody to tie into it. And at the end of the day, it might be, we just built a fourteen million dollar road to nowhere. But as long as we've done that, right, if a single person doesn't tie in, basically we built a fourteen million dollar road to nowhere, right? Or anyone's going to use. But it relieves the town of the liability from the DEP's perspective that the town has stepped up and done everything they possibly could to give, offer a permanent solution to the homeowners. Why, I think it's a good idea. I mean, when they tried to Hudson, the stuff they uncovered and the greater environment damage they did by trying to move the dirty stuff somewhere else to cause more problems than anything, that landfill staying where it is. And so you have to prepare for the worst and say, yeah, it's PFAS tech, but how do you know it's not PCVs or what else that were buried in the forties, thirties, or whatever? So we're doing this because we love our neighbors. We want to add some water. But you can't ask the townspeople to pay for it in a term of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the next two thousand years. There's got to be an end. So I would ask you to support and understand that Core and Circle absolutely has to be part of the solution, but how do they end? That's to be determined.
However, it goes back to the fact that from what I hear and understand, it started off Eagle Drive Fairview, now it's Polo Lane and Circle Lane, and I appreciate, Kuznick said, we're not touching that. This is for Eagle Drive, this particular. It seems like there's a potential, whoever correctly, the EDAs, Gentex didn't want to test, and they said, well, you have to. It seems like it's expanding. What next? So we're just going to keep it year after year. It just from what I from what I hear, which is not really a lot of little, yeah, several of the. Now, Eagle Drive will have this, you know, water line, it will be all screwed up, but take that into a separate issue. But now, a year from now, the town's going to be, oh, Polo Lane, now Circle Lane, whatever private roads have wells, you know, you awesome road, let's throw them in. It's all, it's it spreads. Again, I'm not an expert in my mental law, but they don't have a whole fourteen million dollars. Let's just throw it, it's one problem, and then we'll be back here in five, ten years from now, and most of these people will be, well, will be retired. You know, that's that's what I'm hearing, and it's being, a lot has been said about there's no interest and trying to kind of solidify it, but it is money. It's money the taxpayers are going down to pay, and it's potentially money down the line, because it's a problem that hasn't been, from what I'm hearing, dealt with. And that's the dump, and I think that's made obvious by the mention of additional private roads and private wells that are now being considered for pollutants. And, you know, this isn't an issue, that's only town Dudley, well, there's towns out there because that line, they sue them, and the line of total nonprofit, how they come in for pollution water. I mean, it's not just made to Dudley, but again, I I do think it's being downplayed. It's only fourteen million now, we can just go, no interest, you know, we'll be all good, no, no taxes, but it doesn't sound like it's solving the actual problem.
Thank you. You're, that's your five for the cumulative two times you visited. Thank you.
That's a five. Okay, so we shut off. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sigdenich.
Hi. So DEP says we have to pay to make sure the people are in the Eagle Drive area have clean water. Basically, I have two options. You can vote no today, and we keep doing what we've been doing. You really don't know. What if this gets to be a thing and that cost goes up exponentially? You don't know. Putting the water line in, you know, you know how much it's going to cost, and you know when it ends. It ends at thirty years. It's basically, do you want to rent an apartment, or do you want to buy a house? You buy a house, you're done after thirty years, and you own it. Kind of like what this is with the water line. I like your idea of getting rid of this, the the problem, and I I I don't know how you would. I I don't know how you.
We can't come back to the point.
I don't know how we get rid of not only the dump, but the pollution spread. How do we get rid of what's spread? What we can do is what the DEP wants us to do, and it's basically, do you want to vote no and keep maintaining these buildings? Or do you want to say yes, pay, it looks like less, and have it done in thirty years and be done? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frank.
You know, this problem could get bigger in the future, add more areas to it. That really, it doesn't matter, it's just to what we're talking about tonight, because if we have to add other roads, we have to add other areas. And also, I think the idea of moving the dump doesn't, by the same token, doesn't do anything. We really don't even know for sure if this pollution is coming from the landfill or not. I mean, that hasn't been determined. I mean, some people are hesitant. Do we know that it's from the landfill, or could it be all from Gentex or from another?
Regardless, that's not really part of the topic tonight.
Okay, I'm just saying that that's not an an option to the fourteen point two million.
Thank you. Yeah, you get a little bit of time left. Look at home needs to be able to hear the conversation. I just don't understand, if you sign off and cap the dump, it's going to be fine. Now thirty years later, has anybody approached the DEP? I get it, we're residents, we're responsible, we inherited a problem. Well, we inherited a problem based also at another facility, another entity. Now thirty years later, they come to us and say, you guys got to fix this problem. Thirty years ago, it didn't exist. I get it, ignorance is no exception to the law. So I don't understand, why is the DEP pushing us around when we did what they said to do? They said cap the landfill, we capped the landfill. Now we have pollution problems, and that same DEP is telling us fourteen million dollars, I I'll spend anything to get healthy drinking water for my kids, your kids, and I and I get it, but let's just put the funds in the right spot. This is a band-aid. We all know it. It's a band-aid. You got to think of something better than this. That's all I'm saying. If we turn this article, this article is the one we got to change, guys. We just have to come up with better ideas and better articles and better displacements of our funding, because I guarantee you, this time next year, we'll all be sitting here because the town's going to need another fourteen million at this street, that street, because you have pollution spreads. We all know it. I mean, again, spend it now before it costs a lot later, but let's just look for, this isn't the right use of the funding. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'd like to move the question. Motion's been made and seconded. Go ahead and put that to a voice vote. All in favor, move the question.
Aye.
All opposed.
No.
Motion to move carries.
Why do you vote that I don't speak?
We'll go ahead and move this question to the vote at this time. All in favor of approving Article Eight as the motion was stated. Can we get the count? Definitely, yeah, it's a lot shorter than it was. Can we reload? All right, I try the clicker vote one more time. All in favor, a bunch of votes didn't register based on our previous count. We have well over a hundred and forty, and I only counted six people who left. So we're going to go ahead and put that to the vote. All in favor is a one, all opposed is a two. We go, all in favor, one, all opposed, two. All in favor, one, all opposed, two. It's all right, we've listened to a lot of conversation. A few more seconds of patience isn't going to hurt us, guaranteed. And count nine, four, fifty-one. Yeah, that's pretty close. Were there any issues with the votes out there this time?
Yes.
We have yeses. All right, let me do this the old-fashioned way. Based on this, I know where we're going next. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
I can't determine a two-thirds vote. We give the paper. Yeah, sorry, I was going, I'm in a different lane. I was spending my birthday with y'all, all right? That's all I got. So we're going to go ahead and, Mr. Faulk, you take this side, I'll take this side. All in favor, please hold hands up. This side. Excuse me? Mr. Chinaki? Yeah, I need to start counting all over again. Please just maintain your form. All residents of the state, I know where you're going. Anybody here except for our guest, our minister over here, so that way I'm clear, were you? All right, thank you everybody for your patience. Motion fails 96/57, required 102 votes of the total in participatable. Article nine, yes. Article nine, to see if the town will transfer the sum of $100,000 and 0 cents from sewer retained earnings account number listed. Hey, excuse me? If you are deciding to leave, please leave so quietly so we can continue the meeting. As I said, Article, Mr. Chinaki? I, I, I basically heard you say that, um, I was involved in something that was unethical. Please don't question my character, sir. Go ahead and read the rules, Mr. Chinaki. If you don't, if you continue, I'm gonna ask you to be removed. Article nine, to see if the town will transfer the sum of $100,000 and 0 cents from sewer retained earnings account number listed for design and bidding services for the Potash Brook Interceptor. Mr. Mayall?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The FAA will defer to the Water and Sewer Commission for the next three hours.
Thank you, Mr. Zakowski?
I make a motion that we approve Article nine as printed.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion for Article nine? Seeing none, move Article nine to a vote. All in favor, one, all opposed, two? Uh, with a clear majority, Article 10, to see if the town will transfer the sum of $150,000 from sewer retained earnings account number listed to sewer engineering account number listed for FY 25 design services for the Potash Brook Interceptor. Uh, Mr. Mayall?
Oh, we defer to the Water and Sewer, sorry, I didn't see that.
Mr. Zakowski?
I make a motion that we pass Article 10 for this, to transfer the sum of $150,000 from sewer retained earnings to the engineering account.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion on Article 10? Oh, we did a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm Kathy Carminy, 49th and 4th Row. Could I just understand, how much do you have in sewer retained earnings? And if there's that much, I'm just paying a lot in my sewer bill.
Mr. Zakowski, if you're able to?
I, sorry, I don't know the exact amount, but the sewer, if I remember right, the sewer retained earnings as of today was about $450,000.
Okay, closer to five, uh, Mr. Canoyer?
Closer to $500,000.
Great, thank you.
Jennifer Canoyer, 79th and 4th Row, Ministry of System and Water. Prior to these articles, we're about $400,000 in sewer retained earnings. When we are done, if we are to pass.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion for Article 10? Seeing one for real, this time move this Article two a vote. All in favor, one, all opposed, two? Article 10 passes. Article 11, to see if the town will transfer from sewer retained earnings account number listed, 175,000, oh, no. Uh, $178,500 and 0 cents from Webster Sewer Processing Costs. Mr. Zakowski?
I make a motion that, uh, we pass Article 11 as printed to move $170,500 from.
From Webster?
For Webster Sewer Treatment.
11. Seeing. Article 11 to a vote, all in favor, one, all opposed, two? 11 has passed. Article 12, fund revaluation services for real estate and personal property to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of $15,000 and 0 cents to fund the cost of the recertification of real estate and personal property values for FY 2028 as required by the Commonwealth's Department of Revenue. Mr. Mayall?
FAA recommends you pass over Article 12 and I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded, so any discussion for Article 12 to be passed over? Seeing none, move Article 12 to a vote. All in favor of passing over one, all opposed, two? 13, fund cyclical inspections to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of $21,000 and 0 cents or other sums to fund the cost of the cyclical inspections of all properties in town that have not been inspected in the past 10 years for FY 2026 as required by the Commonwealth's Department of Revenue or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayall?
FAA recommends you pass over Article 13 and I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded, to pass over Article 13, is there any discussion? Seeing none, move Article 13 to a vote. All in favor, one, all opposed, two. That's to pass over Article 13. Approved, thank you. That concludes the issue, Mr. Mayall? Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Gonna take our voice vote, all in favor? All opposed?